January 23rd, 2024, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. I'm Beth Cassavan. I am the chair. We'll take a moment just to go around and introduce ourselves.
Hi, I'm Teresa Flynn.
Michelle Conlin.
John Samia.
Carlos Garcia.
Town manager Kevin Mizikar.
Assistant to town manager Justin Dobson.
The first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second item is to review an act to approve the minutes of January 2nd, 2024, which was a workshop, and January 9th, 2024, which was a meeting.
Move approval?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is announcements and reports. I just have one this evening, and that is that we made a decision to extend the deadline to apply for the 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee. The deadline is now extended until Friday, February 2nd, 2024. The reason that we did that is because we did not get enough applications to be able to form the committee, and we need more people to apply. So this is not unusual. Just a reminder that if you currently serve on a board or a committee, you are still eligible to apply for this committee. It is an ad hoc committee. I think it's going to be a really fun opportunity to figure out how we're going to celebrate our 300th, and I hope that people of all ages and demographics decide that they might like to submit a letter of interest, and we will make that decision in February. Any other announcements and reports from people?
I'm chair. May I just talk about, we are hosting a, the town is hosting a community forum on Thursday, February 8th, at Oak Middle School at 7:00 PM to really go over town meeting, and being a town meeting member, and the role of a town meeting member, and how one can run for that position. So we are going to have Mr. Mizikar provide an overview of our town government structure. We're going to have our town moderator talk about town meeting. And we're going to have a panel of town meeting members, kind of a Q&amp;A session to really help people to understand how they got involved, what the role entails, et cetera. So we'd love for people who might be interested, or even just interested in learning more about our form of town government and town meeting to come. So 7:00 PM at Oak Middle School, which is where town meeting is currently held. So you kind of get a feel for the room, too.
That's great. Thanks for helping to organize this. Now, this is the second one. It's a great idea and a nice initiative that you brought forward, and I hope it's well attended.
I do, too.
Right. If there are no other announcements, I will move on to the town manager's report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, everyone. Happy to share that the Massachusetts Municipal Association has awarded our 2023, excuse me, 2022 Annual Town Report to be second place in the category having population over 30,000. So it's the largest category of population. So we compete against some of the most resourced cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And special thanks to Taylor Galusha for all the hard work that she put into that report, and happy to see that the MMA recognized us.
Yeah, it was exciting to see our name up there.
In lights.
On the list of, yeah, it was great. Congrats. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31, to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within the board's authority. No one has signed up for public comment this evening, but we do remind people that this opportunity exists. And if you would like to come and speak with us before a meeting, please just let the office of the town manager know by noon on the Monday before our meeting. Item number six is a meeting with Gene Richard, attorney, and Jason Ramsey, proposed manager for Price Chopper Operating Company of Massachusetts, Inc., DBA Price Chopper #229, 733 Boston Turnpike, for a change of manager and change of officers and directors to their all alcohol package store license. So I'll invite you to come on up to the table, join us.
Thank you.
We have attorney, Richard.
Okay. Okay.
Thank.
So just on screen.
Oh, really?
Uh huh. Isn't he on the others? Is that him on the one?
No.
Can you hear?
Attorney Richard, can you hear us? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, there you are. Oh, perfect.
Perfect.
Welcome. All right, if you just wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Jason Ramsey, store manager of Shrewsbury Price Chopper Store, too, tonight.
And then on our screen here, we have Gene Richard, who is the attorney.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yeah, if I can turn it over to you, Mr. Richard?
Yes, thank you. So I am here representing the licensee, which is Price Chopper Operating Co. of Massachusetts, Inc. And there are several items in combined application. The first is a change of manager request from Chris Lozon to Jason Ramsey, who, Jason is present in person. And I thank you that I can do this virtually. The second set of requests are a change of officers and directors for the licensee and upstream. So Carol Silas is replacing James Peterson as treasurer of the licensee PCO-C of Massachusetts, and Mark Gross is replacing Frank Kersey as director. And then there are additional director and officer changes to entities upstream in the ownership of the licensee. Those are set out in a, in the application itself, in a document that's included with the application. Those are pretty numerous, and they're also very remote from the licensee. So I won't go through them, but those are available. I would stress that there are no operational changes planned at the store level. The second part of this is basically housekeeping. And then obviously, the on-premises manager is someone who will be in the store, but this, you know, for 40-plus hours a week. But the store itself, people shouldn't notice any difference, customers, when they go shopping. So briefly, Mr. Ramsey has about 35 years of experience in the food industry and with supermarkets. A good portion of that is with supervisory positions or management. He's a U.S. citizen, a Massachusetts resident, and is knowledgeable in the sale of alcoholic beverages at retail and the laws pertaining thereto, as well as the systems in place at Price Chopper. So we would, pending any questions you may have, we would request approval for these changes in the application.
Are there any questions? Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Ramsey?
No.
All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve Price Chopper Operating Company of Massachusetts, Inc., DBA Price Chopper #229's application for multiple amendments to its Section 15 All Alcohol Package Store License.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. You are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your time. Drive safe.
Yeah, thank you.
You, too.
Thank you. It's starting to snow, but it's not to be too bad. Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
All right. Item number seven is under Financial Business, and it is an update on the FY 2025 budget.
Just a couple of updates for the board this evening. We'll continue to focus on the revenue side of things as we're still working through the departmental budget requests. We got some good news in comparison to where we thought we'd be with the release of preliminary numbers for the governor's budget. We understand that the budget will be released in greater detail tomorrow when it's filed. But the good news that we got is that the governor will use, provide 3% higher unrestricted general government aid for all municipalities. So this is actually quite a surprise because of the overall consensus revenues not being able to keep pace and actually going down over year over year if you take out the fair share amendment or the millionaire's tax. So seeing a 3% unrestricted general government aid, if it holds throughout the budget process, would be a welcome change. Now, unrestricted general government aid is not a big number for us in the grand revenue scheme. It's a little over $3 million. We conservatively budget that. But because the governor's budget is normally held throughout the process, or one of the most conservative aspects of the process, we'll take a look at what opportunities that we have there. Generally speaking, it should provide about another $70,000 over what we had originally put in our revenue estimates for the fiscal year. With regards to the expenditures and the budget development that we're projecting for fiscal year '25, we've made it through, I would say, 90% of the departmental budgets at this time. And we still have work to do to get down to the expenditure cap. But we'll continue to work on it, and the budget will be released in the middle of February. And we'll provide a full report to the board at your second meeting, or, excuse me, your first meeting in February prior to release.
Thank you. Any questions on budget update? All right. Move on to item number eight under Old Business, which is an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA funding.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm Alex Martinez. I'm the assistant to the town manager, management analyst. And I'm happy to provide you with another update on our quarterly ARPA expenditures. So this first slide just gives an overview of the phases of ARPA allocation. So Phase 1, Phase 2, and then the FY '24 Capital Improvement Plan. Where funds were allocated to supplement that plan. So in total, $11,471,775 was allocated through original appropriations by the board, and some of that has been scaled back. But to date, through December 31st, 2023, $4,137,492 has been expended on those projects, leaving a balance of just over $7.3 million. And just going through some of the categories. So Phase 1, general operating expenses, these were funds used to offset the tax bills, and 81.36% of those projects have been expended. The Holden-Clinton Street Water Main Replacement Project is pretty much wrapped up at 99.8% of expenditures. Phase 1 Response to the Pandemic Public Health Projects are completed at 52.22% expended to date. And then finally, the last Phase 1 category, Negative Economic Impacts. That's 65.56% expended to date. Moving into Phase 2, we've yet to spend anything from the Super Infrastructure Projects. 23.53% of the Utility Assistance and Social Safety Net Programs have been expended to date. 18.17% of Quality of Life Projects have been expended to date. 28.55% of Enhanced Engagement and Communications Projects have been expended to date. .22% of Staff Recruitment Development and Performance have been expended to date. 36.91% of Public Safety Initiatives have been expended to date. And 50.11% of the FY '24 Capital Improvement Projects have been expended to date. This next slide just highlights some details on Quarter 4, 2023 expenditures. So this is our latest reporting period, and this covers October 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. And lastly, I just wanted to provide the board with a kind of general update. So in December, the U.S. Treasury issued an Obligation Interim Final Rule, and this is kind of just a supplemental document to go with all of the other guidelines instilled for these funds. And they provided some clarification on how recipients should obligate funds. As you know, the obligation deadline is December 31st, 2024, and Treasury defines obligation as an order placed for property and services and entering into contracts, sub-awards, and similar transactions that require payment. That definition did not change in the Obligation IFR, but U.S. Treasury did a webinar and released some guidance that implies to us that a legislative body appropriation or proposed allocation plan does not meet the definition of obligation because it doesn't provide standards that can be applied consistently across all recipients. So we are awaiting publication of the Obligation Final Rule to kind of understand those full implications on our December 2022 Comprehensive Funding Plan.
So just to add a little bit there. Previously, there had been a sign, effort to treat the revenue, the funds that could be used for revenue reduction or taken for revenue loss, which for Shrewsbury is $10 million of our $11.6 million, and look at it as, through the proposed allocation method. And cities and counties across the country through the National League of Cities was requesting the Treasury would provide that opportunity, basically meaning what the board had done to date would have satisfied the obligation rule, which would have given us two additional years through 2026 to spend all those dollars. Treasury has not agreed to that. So it means that we may have to revisit the plan and look at a subset of the dollars that have yet to be expended to ensure that we spend everything before the end of the calendar year. In some areas, that could mean significant adjustments. In some areas, we're already all set, even though the funds haven't been expended, we have that contract in place. So we're looking at that now that, you know, this has come out in December, and we'll be back in touch with any changes so that we can ensure, again, we want to spend all the dollars. We want to spend them prudently and not rush. But we may have to reconsider how we think about capital investments and things over the near term and either augment, supplement, or move things forward faster than we otherwise would have.
So for social, for safety net purposes, I think the only way to comply with that is to expend them.
Correct.
Like, the others, you can do a contract, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, the largest dollar category, you know, would be, right now that I think about would be like the set aside for land acquisition, right? Where there's no way to tie that up in a contract, and your obligation of that for a purpose is not satisfying the U.S. Treasury's rule. So you may have to repurpose those dollars, spend them in a different way.
Unless we identify, yeah. Over the next, okay.
Yeah.
Any more? So this is a good segue into talking about the Social Safety Net Programs. The board did set aside, and thank you,
Thank you.
Ms. Martinez, for the presentation. The board did set aside $100,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funding for Shrewsbury Resident Assistance Programs. And that money has no way of being expended because we didn't take that next step to sort of put in place what are the parameters? What's the eligibility? How does someone access that money? So there is a document in your drive that is a draft proposal for our Resident Assistance Program, where eligible residents would be able to access a certain amount of this funding. The proposal says that we would partner with Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, the Council on Aging, or St. Anne's Human Services, to ensure that eligible residents are aware of these funds and are supported in the application process. So eligible residents would be allowed one application per household, and the program would run until the funds were depleted. So to be considered, an applicant would need to provide documentation, and we're encouraging that they would work with SYFS, the Council on Aging, or St. Anne's Human Services, to make sure that the necessary paperwork is completed. And also, that kind of gets them in the pipeline for the long-term assistance that they might need in order to stay ahead of bills that might be piling up. So applicants would need to provide documentation of proof of residency in Shrewsbury, a copy of their completed SMOCK application, which is the South Middlesex Opportunity Council, and that provides fuel assistance and utility assistance, among other things, or a completed Raft application, which is the State's Rental Assistance for Families and Transitions Program, which provides assistance in payment for your residents. A copy of, if they're applying for relief on a utility bill, a copy of that utility bill. So it could be oil, gas, electric, propane, whatever it may be. Either a past due or a shut-off notice because we know that during the winter months, there is no shut-off notice that can come from a gas or an electric company. And then a statement from a landlord of back rent due if applying for rental assistance, or a past due notice of a mortgage payment if applying for mortgage assistance. So applicants would need to provide any, all of that information. And then we would determine whether or not they were eligible for assistance. And knowing that we have $100,000 right now available, the proposal states that applicants would be eligible for up to $1,000 in utility assistance or up to $2,000 in rental or mortgage assistance, understanding that they would need to provide us with a W-9, and they would receive a 1099 issued to them for anything they received in excess of $600. So still sort of working out the details. And I do want to thank Ms. Martinez for her assistance in putting this draft together and answering some of the questions that sort of came up. And also to Jen Rifkin at Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, who answered a bunch of questions as well and sort of explained the process that a resident needs to go through in order to be considered eligible for the long-term benefits through SMOCK or Raft. There is a lag sometimes in people getting their applications reviewed or expedited for SMOCK. You need to sometimes have a shut-off notice from your utility, and where that isn't something that's coming in these winter months, people are not getting their, you know, getting the assistance that they need, and so the bills are just sort of growing. So this would be like a stopgap, a way to sort of help people stay afloat. Looking for any other comments or suggestions, questions that people have so that we can start working on getting this out to the community and spending these dollars.
I'm sure. First, thank you for taking the initiative. I think, you know, you reached out to me on a weekend saying that you were aware of a resident in need, and you were really, you took the initiative to get this moving. So thanks for doing that. Question regarding the eligible amounts. It states here it's up to $1,000 in utility assistance or up to $2,000 in rental or mortgage assistance. So if I use $1,000 for rental assistance, am I still eligible for up to $1,000 in utility? Or is it one or the other? Can you just clarify?
I think that's up to this board to decide.
Okay.
Right, we set aside the funds.
I'm just looking at how it's drafted.
Right.
In the draft, I would think that we could just clarify that.
Could say and/or, or one or the other. You know, the idea behind this, and when we had these discussions, you know, a year and a half ago about how we were going to use this ARPA funding, it was really clear we just wanted to be able to help people. So, you know, that's, I think, what's behind this. So if and/or helps people, that's great. I don't know how, I have no way of knowing how fast we'll go through these funds. You know, obviously, if you do less, then you help more people, but at the same time, you know.
With the update from the Treasury, it seems like we only have, for this funding, we'd only have till the end of this calendar year to use these funds?
That's, that's how it sits right now. Yep. And I'm not confident it's going to change.
Okay.
So, you know, these needs don't happen in a vacuum.
You know, a lot of times when you're behind on your rent, you're also behind on utilities, and you're experiencing food insecurity, and many other things that just snowball and compound on each other. So I think, you know, an and/or here is fair. Like you said, we just wanted to help people, and this is an opportunity to be able to help some people.
Any other thoughts on the and/or?
It is hard to determine where we don't necessarily know the need. I mean, if we do and, you know, that's sort of a maximum of $3,000 per household, which gets us to help just over 33 people. That might be less or more than, you know, what the demand is. But I hear what you're saying. So I'm comfortable with how it's written. I'd be comfortable with a maximum of $2,000 per household or some number. But if we feel that this would be the appropriate amount to help the people that are in this situation, that the 2,000, you know, saying less than 2,000 for rental or mortgage assistance really isn't going to move the needle for someone, then I'd be comfortable keeping it the way it is.
Any other thoughts? Mr. Samia?
I would go and/or flexibility. It provides, it doesn't mean you do it. It just means you have the options to do it. So that, this flexibility built in this. I think we should consider, though, we may have a timing issue with this. So if it's, it can't be until expended. It has to be the first to occur of some date or expended because if it's not expended by 12:30, 1:24, we lose it. So we may want to do, depending how quickly we can outlay the amounts, it may, we may want to put a cutoff of October 31st or, because that way you're not going to run the risk of we have proceeds left over, and we may not pay them in time, and then we lose it. So that's just a thought that the first to occur of. Not that we don't want to expend it. That's the point of it. That was the whole point of the safety net and the part of this earmarked ARPA funds. But we want to do a date certain so we don't run into that possibility. And what I don't know in some of the questions is, how will this be paid? And is it directly paid? And how quickly can it be paid? And that way, it gives you, gives a cushion to be paid and make sure that it gets paid in time. So those are things just to think about just a couple of months before.
You wouldn't mind. I don't want to put Alex on the spot, but I have been asking her a million questions, and she's been really great about checking in with the town accountant and seeing.
So as far as the how they would get paid, it would be through our accounts payable process. We did clarify with accounting that payments could be made to individuals or to utility companies or landlords themselves. Obviously, just as long as we have proper documentation, both can be done. And so just for timing-wise, once it's approved, we process accounts payable on, by Wednesday of each week, and then a check is cut and mailed out the following Wednesday. So.
Even November 30th, that gives a grace period that would be able to cover it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask you a question? With, you know, applicants were being required to complete a W-9 and having a 1099 issued at the end of the year for amounts in excess of $600, how would that work if we are paying directly to a utility? You know, can, so, you know, for example, say, for example, I was getting, you know, $1,000 of assistance for a utility bill, and it's being paid directly to that utility, how would I then get a 1099 for that funding if the check is cut to?
Yep. So in that case, the individual would not get the 1099. It would just be us paying that utility company kind of on behalf of them. It would just be if the payment was submitted directly to them as the individual.
Okay, all right. I know a lot, sorry if I might ask another question. Of course. A lot of these assistance programs through SMOCK and Raft and things like that are income, there's income eligibility's requirements. So how, you know, I would just be concerned about applicants receiving assistance from the town and affecting their eligibility for longer-term assistance. So.
So I will say that at no point in my conversation with SYFS did they, did Jen raise any concern about that happening.
Okay.
Just one more thing. From a tax standpoint, if it's over 600 and we're issuing a 1099 to the, so the, just so I have it. Over 600, if it's paid directly to the individual instead of to whoever the utility or whatever, then they will get a 1099 and taxed over that amount, right? So the 1099, they're going to have to pay taxes on that.
Yeah, I mean, however they handle their taxes, it's just, that's kind of our threshold. Is anything over 600, they're 1099.
Yeah, so the only thing I'm thinking, the unintended consequence is, say, if you give someone $2,000 directly, and they get a 1099 for over that of 1,400, they're going to presumably have to, we should confirm. If they include that in their income, they're going to get, they could, depending on their income amounts, get taxed on that, and that's not really 1,400. I'm not trying to complicate it, but. I'm not trying to complicate it, but the easiest way to do it would be to direct pay so we don't have that issue.
Correct.
And can I just ask one question from a technical standpoint? Are these vendors we have to qualify as part of our internal process or we can just, no issues with that? Okay, okay.
So we would do the same thing, we would ask if it's not a company that's already a vendor of ours. For example, like Selco, if we were paying Selco, Selco's already a vendor that had better system. If it was a new company vendor, we would just, we would get a W nine from them also.
Okay, all right. In an ideal world, it's direct pay, that way you don't have any unintended.
No, I definitely think that a direct pay is the best option. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you and thank you for taking the lead on this and thank you, Alex, for your help. I was curious on, I guess, ensuring that we're providing these funds equitably. You know, to Teresa's point, if we're going to be potentially giving applicants the three thousand maximum, that's only thirty-three people, if we get more applicants than that, how are we ensuring that we're providing those funds in an equitable way? I don't know if that's in here or a more technical question.
There's no real way to know that you're, I mean, unless you were to, because you don't know the need that's out there, right? I always think like the people who need us most don't even realize that we exist and that we could possibly help them and that is really a challenge, right? So I guess you want to be equitable, but I don't, I don't know how you can build that in. Do you have a suggestion? I'm not sure.
No, I just, I'm curious on it, I don't know.
By nature, this is sort of a first come, first served sort of situation. For me, and I mean, I'm only speaking for myself and what I read in other communities. You know, I've seen other communities put more funding into it when it became depleted. I'm not sure what kind of response we're going to get or whether people are even going to realize that we're doing something. I hope we do. Now hearing too, like when we, when this first, you know, went into the drive, we didn't even realize that there was this issue with the ARPA funding where we might have money. So maybe there is an opportunity to look at something else that we had allocated and be able to put it here because we know it'll go out quicker. I don't know if, I wish I could think of a good way to be equitable.
And I'll just, whether it helps or not, I'm not sure, but I'll add, you know, when we offered business assistance program, like people could apply and, you know, if you're a business and just get paid back, you know, we put fifty thousand in and could only get rid of thirty of it, right? We still have twenty left over. For the first fifty thousand that went for, directly for home heating assistance last year, only ten of it was spent. So I think we may be challenged more in getting applications than, I completely appreciate the comments and they're right on, but like, I think we're going to struggle to get more applications to expend the money than we may end up having to worry about whether we're, you know, making sure that income and expenses are aligned for equity purposes.
Yeah. I mean, I think, just knowing that we're helping people, I think, sort of hits equity a little bit because we know that there are people in the community that are struggling and that, you know, wealth is not equally distributed in any community in our country. And this is really a program that targets people who are feeling that squeeze where they're looking one place and doing the right thing and putting in their application, but not getting the assistance that they need in time to really help them. And so it's sort of just, I think, addressing those people who are falling through the cracks. And I think that's probably the best we're going to be able to do. Again, always open to suggestions to be more equitable with it.
Is this something that we could, you know, just put some information out to folks at the senior center, the social worker with the police department, SYFS, and just let them know that this is available? You know, as they're the ones in the community who are engaging with people, you know, in their times of need. So they might be some of like the best resources in finding the folks who we can help while we have the opportunity to help them.
Yeah, that's absolutely the intention and that's why, you know, it says at the beginning, right, that we're going to partner with our social service agencies just to make sure that they're funneling people toward this program. But the police is actually a really good idea to the social worker, that I didn't think of that, so that's a good one.
I know she's, in the last year, she had responded to a significant number of calls. So, you know, I know that she is engaging in the community, so it may be a good, good spot to help some folks here.
And of course, it will be communicated out the way that all of town programs are communicated out. Again, I'm not sure what the reach is, I guess we'll find out. But just sort of work on these final pieces and sort of just work through with Alex and make sure that getting people set up won't be a problem. I don't, you know, I don't know how long it takes before we can actually put this out to the community. You know, I don't want to rush you in your process to make sure that you're able to deal with an application when it comes in and be able to do this in a timely fashion. So that's just something, you know, you can work on the timing and if the board is agreeable to this draft, you know, there's, I would go according to your schedule more than just putting it out tomorrow, for example.
But it's definitely something that we could get.
Okay.
So may I ask another question?
Sure.
I know our next update would be three months from now, so we'd be looking in April for the update from December to March, is that right? So is it, would it be possible to get sort of, once we launch this and communicate it out, could we get like an update like as, you know, of how much, how much demand there is? Like sort of in more closer to real time than, than, you know, three months from now? Just in case we do want to reallocate some funding and make any decisions in that, in that regard? Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. We can move on to new business. So item number nine is to review an act to designate the chief of police the authority to assign specific police officers to polling places pursuant to the Votes Act for the twenty twenty-four election. And this is, we did this last year too, so it's a recurring agenda item related to elections. It's put forth by the town clerk's office. If there's any questions or just good with it? Take a motion.
Motion to designate the chief of police the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability to polling places pursuant to the Votes Act for the twenty twenty-four elections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to correspondence. Item number ten is an email dated January ninth, twenty twenty-four from Ann Marie Rafferty DePiero of Sixth Candlewood Way regarding Worcester Sand and Gravel and the Clinton-Holden Street Project. She reached out to the select board asking for someone to give her a call and I did that, I spoke with her. She had a lot of questions and concerns and I answered what I could. Many thanks to Mr. Baldinger for kind of prepping me before that call so that I had good information for her. I also provided her with the contact information for Jackie Martin, who is doing the, sort of the public outreach for GFI Partners and also with Morris DiPaolo, who's the chair of the planning board, who also had a conversation with her. So I did receive a follow-up email, she is feeling well-informed and that there was, you know, people were willing to talk to her and she had her questions answered and feels a lot more comfortable with the process and knowing how she can, you know, further engage and get her concerns heard. Item number eleven is a letter dated January twelfth, twenty twenty-four from Nick Repeca, the highway division manager regarding the snow report, thirteen inches of snow. This was the January twelfth, twenty twenty-four storm and you're going to have to indulge me because I love reading these. But I also just want to point out just how much work goes into clearing our roads of snow. And I mean, anybody who took a look at the Facebook community pages probably saw a good number of negative comments regarding snow removal, but I think when you read this report, you start to realize exactly how difficult it was to clear that storm and how hard the crews were working. So the personnel began anti-icing the day before, right? And then at eight o'clock at night, the highway crew was ready on Saturday night and they began treating all of the roots. And then they started their full plowing operation at midnight on Sunday. And it was twenty-four pieces of town equipment and thirty-three contracted pieces of equipment for a plowing operation that was complete by twelve AM on Monday, January eighth. So those are the same people, you know, riding those routes for all of those hours, which is tiring and it's really quite an effort. The other thing that was complicating with this storm was that there was rain coming and thirteen inches of snow was going to melt very quickly. And so these crews then needed to start dealing with storm drains and making sure that we weren't going to have road flooding because of the high amount of rain that was coming. And so very complicated storm. And I just want to extend the, you know, a thank you to the crews who were out there working on it because it really is more difficult than it, than it looks, I think, when we're sitting in our warm homes. And then item number twelve is a letter dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-four from Nick Repeca, again, from the highway division manager about another snow report, which was three inches of snow on Tuesday, January sixteenth. And that, they started at one in the morning, you know, so the crews get called in at all hours. It is a very difficult job and they take it very seriously. And if anybody is interested in the, the cost per inch on that storm was ten thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars per inch, which is always, I think, interesting to look at. So I just want to, again, thanks to the highway crew for all the work. Hopefully, it's going to get warmer and we won't get a lot more snow. That's all I have for this evening, so unless there's anything else to come before the board an open session, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.